The opening statement.
Sure. Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, April 25th, 2022. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be opened. Adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 14th, 2021, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Trittown News. Second, on December 14th, 2021, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury, excuse me, hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on December 14th, 2021, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For any members of the public wishing to ask questions or comment on an application, you will need to use the raise your hand feature when the chairman opens the hearing up for members of the public. Once you are brought into the meeting, you will need to have both audio and video. You will be sworn in and required to give your name and address. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise or lower your hand and star six to mute or unmute yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Cantor's been excused. Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. Mertens?
Here.
Mr. Moretti?
Here.
Mr. Orozco's been excused. Mr. Stanton's been excused. Mr. Gonzalez?
Here.
Chairman Seiya?
Here.
And Chairman Nansen's been excused. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Would everyone join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance-
Allegiance to the flag-
Flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic-
Into the Republic, which is a land-
One nation- Under God-
Under God.
Indivisible- With liberty-
Liberty-
And justice-
Justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Mr. Bear, can we swear in the professionals, please?
Yes, can everyone please raise their right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
You are muted, Mark, just so you know.
You were muted.
I do.
And then if everyone, I guess individually, just say your name and spell your last so the record's clear.
I think you're muted too, Christine.
I don't think I'm muted now, right?
No, you're all good.
You're good. I was saying, if everyone, Christine, Mark, and Shari, just state your name and spell your last one at a time.
Mark Roemer, R-O-H-M-E-Y-E-R.
Shari Spero. S-P-E-R-O.
Christine Bell, B-E-L-L.
Your professionals are sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Eileen, any minutes for approval?
No minutes for approval this evening.
Any vouchers?
No vouchers this evening.
Do we have any correspondence?
We do. I have a letter from Stephen Melnack. He is the attorney for NJ Solar 2000 LLC. He's asking the board to adjourn the application for this evening and reschedule it for June 27th, 2022, and they will renotice for that hearing.
That's June 22nd?
June 27th.
Seven, seven.
Yes, seven. Thank you.
With a renotice?
Yes.
Okay. For anyone in the public that is joining us for case number BA 20-117, New Jersey Solar 2000 LLC, this case is being rescheduled for June 27th with a new notice due by the applicant.
Thank you, and that's all the correspondence I have.
Okay. Resolutions. We have case number BA 21-06, Robert Laskowski. Resolution granting use variance and preliminary final major site plan with ancillary variance relief. Eligible voters: Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, Orozco, Seiya, and Nansen. With the pleasure of the board.
Make a motion to approve.
Hughes.
I'll second.
Mertens. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
And Chairman Seiya?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution's memorialized.
Thank you. Case number BA 21-17, Gabrielli Howell Realty LLC. Resolution granting use variances, bulk variances, and preliminary and final major site plan. Eligible voters: Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Orozco, Gonzalez, and Seiya.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Who is that, Mertens?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a second?
I'm sorry, what are we, what are we voting on?
What is that one? What is that one?
Gabrielli Howell Realty.
Oh, okay, I'll second that, sir. I'll second that.
Hughes will second it. Good, thank you. Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Chairman Seiya?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution's memorialized.
Sorry, that was not on our list, so I was a little confused, sorry.
I sent a revised one.
Okay. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
All right, third one for resolution. Here we go. Third case number BA 21-16, Mohammed Kaya. Resolution granting bulk variances. Eligible voters: Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Orozco, and Seiya.
I'll make a motion.
Hughes.
Second.
Mertens. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
And Chairman Seiya?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution's memorialized. Thank you.
Great. So, Mr. Bear?
Yes.
We have five sitting members, and the conditional use variance is on the agenda, which is the next application. That's case number BA 22-03, Hutton Street 17 LLC. The type is a conditional use variance and preliminary major fight, final major site plan with ancillary bulk variance and waiver relief.
I have Damian Del Duca, who is the attorney for that case, on. He's in the hearing now.
Got it. So the description. Application of Hutton Street 17 LLC as applicant and Irving Advertising Company, Inc. as owner seeking conditional use variance and preliminary and final major site plan with ancillary bulk variance and waiver relief to construct a 5,294 square foot car wash building with associated site improvements. The improvements will include the removal of the existing one-story building and gravel parking area in order to construct the proposed building, a 24-space parking lot, one right ingress, right egress driveway, sight lighting, landscaping, building signage, trash refuse enclosure, retaining walls, and two stormwater manager basements. That's two, that's two stormwater management basins with associated site improvements on premises known as Block 74, Lot 8, 4880 U.S. Highway South. Exploration date, July 21st, 2022. Mr. Del Duca.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Bear, everyone, how are you? I am Damian Del Duca, and I am the attorney for the applicant, and I was going to start by introducing our team and giving you an introduction about our application, but I couldn't help but hearing that it seems that you only have five members tonight that are present. Do I understand that correctly, Mr. Chairman?
That's correct.
As I'm sure you're all aware, zoning board members, you have seven voting members. I realize that some people couldn't make it tonight. This application involves a use variance, a D1 use variance, and as a result, we require five affirmative votes or yes votes for this application. Do you expect a sixth member to appear soon, or is this it for the night, as far as you know?
This looks like it's it until around nine o'clock tonight.
Okay.
So, and there's no other applicants on the agenda.
It's, that's always the way. When you're the only one, this is when these things happen. So as much as we really don't want to postpone this application, as I'm sure you understand, as only board members, you know, when you have five members and you need five yes votes, there are certain, you know, risks associated with that. So I've spoken to my client while we were waiting to be promoted as panelists, and we agreed amongst ourselves that if you're only going to have five, we had better postpone to the next available meeting, as much as we hate to do that. But if you had six, we were going to proceed. So I know no one wants to wait until nine o'clock. So if that's the case, then we would ask the board to table it to the next, the earliest possible hearing date, and an announcement be made since the meeting has been properly opened with a quorum, and you could do that.
Yes, Mr. Del Duca. I understand. Before we do this, Ms. Bell? My understanding is this application, two months from now, when the master plan is reintroduced, might not even be sitting in front of us. Is that correct?
Um. It, it could be. I haven't really had much to do with the master plan reexam, so I can't tell you that.
So I could tell you, Mr. Chairman, that I did see a draft of the land use element that is up for consideration. And as I understand it, and anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, is if that's adopted, you would still, the town would still need to adopt an ordinance following that recommendation, which of course takes some time. This application has a really unique history in that we filed this application. I didn't write down the date, but it's many, many months ago. We were, and we were assigned to the planning-
It was last year.
It was definitely last year.
Yeah.
And we were assigned to the planning board, I believe, in November, and immediately prior to that planning board meeting, let me back up. Car wash is a conditional use in the highway development or HD1 zone. We went, we applied to the planning board. We were scheduled before the planning board. I think the day or two before the planning board, we brought to the planning board attorney, Mr. Cucharo's attention a case from the appellate division, which we had not been aware of, that said that if you have a conditional use and the town doesn't state any conditions like how did here, then even though, at least to me and Mr. Cucharo, we thought that that intuitively would mean that it's a permitted use, the appellate division disagreed for reasons I don't fully, fully agree with, but my vote doesn't matter in that regard. So I consulted with Mr. Cucharo, who had agreed with me, but also agreed that we had to follow the appellate division, so we got reassigned to the zoning board. So we would like to proceed in front of the zoning board as soon as we are able, even though we were going to mention tonight that the township has at least introduced for consideration a land use element that suggests fixing what I suspect was an inadvertent oversight. Why would you have a conditional use with no conditions? So it sounds like the town has decided, probably as a result of this application, to clean that up. But we'd like to go forward if we can, Mr. Chairman, if we're able.
Damien, the only point, or something I would throw out there for consideration is you can have the hearing tonight, note and carry it till, you know, without a vote, and then the other members could certify, they've reviewed the transcript, I mean, or the recording, and proceed that way, if that, I mean, as a possibility, if the board wants to keep things moving.
Yeah, we, we do have one member who's on a long-term illness right now. So our chances of never having seven is kind of iffy. But I did just text two of the members to see if there's any way they can even sign on and come at this late hour, so.
Can I, can I mute you and turn off my video and call my client and be back in just a moment?
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
So Eileen, you asked Mr. Cantor to see if he could join us?
Yes, and I asked Mr. Stanton too, because he said he was working late, but if he got home in time, he could attend, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I, I agree with our attorney. I think we should ask the applicant to at least put the information testimony on the record, and then we can worry about certifying next meeting if we don't get a sixth member.
And so to them, though.
Bogged up, you know, with more applications being on the back burner.
I agree.
Mr. Chairman, with them checking, can I just step out real quick to the bathroom?
Absolutely, Mr. Hughes.
Thank you.
Just go unmute.
No. Come, bring it in.
Did she make me some? So, Mr. Chairman, I'm back. This is Damian Del Duca. Thank you to Mr. Bear for that suggestion. We're going to take him up on his, on his suggestion, and we're going to proceed tonight to take advantage of everybody's time and try to, to put this application forward. And then unless we change our mind before we finish tonight, we'll, we'll likely ask you to table it and then have one or two additional members listen to the, or watch this and listen to it and certify to that effect per the land use law. And then we could take a vote at the next hearing, if that's the way it pans out.
That'll work, Mr. Del Duca. Mr. Hughes just took a pause. He'll be back in a minute or two.
Okay.
But if you want to start to introduce your professionals.
Sure.
Do you need me to bring anyone else into the meeting?
Well, I, I only see Mr. Modesto, our engineer, in the lower right corner of my screen. I have Ray Gargano, G-A-R-G-A-N-I-O, who you should see.
Okay.
I have Andrew Valari, our traffic engineer. And I have Christine Azar Kaphon, our planner.
Okay.
And Mr. Gargano is bringing them in. Mr. Gargano is with Hutton and who are the creators of Mod Wash, which is why we're here this evening.
I'm back, folks. Thank you.
So if you'd like, Mr. Chairman, I could give an introductory statement and really try to narrow the issues as to why we're here. And then we have, you know, a full presentation planned for tonight, although hopefully it will be an efficient one, and we'll try to focus on the primary issues and answer any questions that the board may have.
I'm just sorry. I think we're still waiting on one more?
Yeah, I'm trying to bring him in. Oh, he's coming now, I think. There we go.
Okay, well, for Valari, Kaphon, and Gargano.
And Jake Modesto.
And Jay Modesto. Well, he already has his on. Okay, all, all the professionals. Mr. Bear, they're yours.
And the applicant professionals, raise your right hands. Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
I do.
Okay, so we'll do one at a time. Mr. Modesto, can you just state your name for the record, spell your last?
Yep, Jake Modesto. Last name is M-O-D-E-S-T-O-W, with Stonefield Engineering.
Thank you. Mr. Garganio?
Ray Garganio, G-A-R-G-A-N-I-O, with Hutton.
Ms. Kaphon?
Good evening. It's Christine Nazzaro, N-A-Z-Z-A-R-O, Kaphon, C-O-F-Z-N-Frank, O-N-E, with Kaphon Consulting Group, applicant's planner.
And is Mr. Valari as well?
Certainly. Andrew Valeri, spelled V as in Victor, I-L-L-A-R-I, also with Stonefield Engineering and Design, the applicant's traffic engineer.
I think you're ready to, they're ready to proceed, Mr. Del Duca.
Thank you, Mr. Bear, Mr. Chairman, and everyone. Again, for the record, my name is Damian Del Duca, and I'm the applicant's attorney. The applicant tonight is Hutton St. 17 LLC, and they operate a business or affiliated with a business known as Mod Wash. Mod Wash is an express car wash business, and they're out of Chattanooga, Tennessee, and we have been assisting Mod Wash in getting new express car wash locations approved throughout the state of New Jersey. And this is one of a long list in New Jersey where they're expanding this express car wash. An express car wash, this will be in a state-of-the-art express car wash, which is largely automated, which you're going to hear about tonight, although there will be employees on site at all times. But it's not the car wash that we all grew up with. It's, again, heavily automated, very efficient, very fast, state-of-the-art car wash. The property in question is 4880 Route 90 South. It's on the west side of Route 9. Southbound, it's Block 74, Lot 8. It's approximately 1.35 acres. And the existing, or the last use there that I'm aware of, was the Garden State Sign Company on this 1.35-acre site, which is an old one-story masonry building in poor condition. And we propose to remove all existing improvements and build an express car wash with a building of 5,294 square feet on that. Mr. Modesto is going to control the exhibits tonight. So if we can allow him to share his screen, and I'll ask Mr. Modesto to put up Exhibit A 17, which is one of the exist, aerial exhibits that we have, Jake. As he's bringing up that aerial, I'll tell you what you already know, and that is that this property on this section of Route 9 is in a heavily commercial corridor of Howell Township. It's next to the Walmart. Thank you. So on your screen is Exhibit A 17. It's been premarked for this hearing. The site is the color version in the center where the cursor is currently. Above that and to the left is essentially to the southwest is the Walmart. Across the street, there's multiple other commercial uses, including the Lowe's and various pad sites. And to the north of our site, there's a commercial building with retail and I think some office tenants. And as the name suggests, in the highway development or HD1 zone, the purpose of that zone is to promote, you know, highway-oriented businesses. And we're here tonight for an express car wash. And as I mentioned earlier tonight, a car wash is listed as a conditional use in the HD1 zone or HD zone. And, but unfortunately, the ordinance does not contain or include any conditions for the conditional use. So it's a conditional use with no conditions. And we originally filed this application in 2021 to the planning board. And as I mentioned earlier, we found out just prior to that hearing that there was case law that states when that unusual event occurs and you have a conditional use with no conditions, rather than being considered a permitted use, which some municipalities have applied as the law, the appellate division says it's, you have to go in for a use variance to the zoning board. So the application was essentially transferred to the zoning board, and we're here tonight to present the application for that D1 use variance. It's not a conditional use variance, even though this is stated as a conditional use in your ordinance. It's actually considered a D1 variance to permit a principal use that is not permitted in the HD1 zone. We also seek tonight preliminary and final major site plan approval for this car wash, together with any bulk variances and waivers that may be required. We're going to include in those variance requests some sign relief that we need. I just wanted to state at the outset that we've scaled back our sign package, and we're going to, Mr. Modesto will present the sign details to you. What we've reduced the signage, tried to eliminate some signs, reduced the size of the pylon signs dramatic, this pylon sign dramatically. So rather than have us repeat ourselves, I'll have Mr. Modesto testify to that. But I wanted to mention that the sign plan has been scaled back. We have several review letters. The most recent ones are from Ms. Beam's office dated April 18th, T and M's office dated April 20th, CME's office dated April 22nd, as well as, I believe, a letter from some of your inside agencies, including the Shatree Commission and the County Board of Health. And I'm happy to report that we agree to abide by the recommendations set forth in those review letters, unless otherwise stated this evening, and I don't expect there to be any exceptions, but I reserve the right in case I misunderstood that. But I believe we're in agreement with the comments. There have been several rounds of comments, so we think we've gotten this cleaned up to the point where we're willing to accept the recommendations set forth in the latest review letters that I just identified. So hopefully that'll help expedite things this evening. We'll also try to include the testimony that your professionals asked for in their review comments. We have various exhibits tonight. We're going to focus on, you know, the site plan, the building architectural elevations and the sign plans. But we're certainly willing to answer any questions that any of you may have relating to the exhibits that Eileen was kind enough to assemble. So unless anyone has any questions for me, my plan, Mr. Chairman, was to have Mr. Modesto testify first, and then we'll have Mr. Valari, our traffic engineer, provide some relatively brief traffic testimony, followed by Ms. Kaphon, our planner. Mr. Gargano is also here. He's very familiar with Mod Wash's operations, as is Mr. Modesto. But he, Ray can answer any questions that any of you have that Mr. Modesto can answer. So he'll, he'll testify if necessary, but we'll definitely have testimony from the other three witnesses, all of whom have been sworn. Mr. Chairman, you're muted.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Modesto, it's all yours.
Okay, Mr. Modesto, you've been sworn, so let's begin with you briefly reviewing your professional background.
Yeah, sure. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license is in good standing. I have multiple other engineering licenses throughout the Northeast, Midwest. I graduated from Stevens Institute of Technology with a Bachelor's of Engineering. I've worked on probably over 100 land development applications, dozen of them. Just about a dozen of them have been Mod Wash car washes. And I then qualify as an expert witness in front of many boards in the state of New Jersey.
We accept your credentials, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Modesto, were the civil plans prepared under your direct supervision?
They were, yes.
And are you personally familiar with those plans and this site and the general surrounding area?
I am.
And have you testified in a similar capacity in other Mod Wash applications in New Jersey?
Yes, I have.
And are you familiar with Mod Wash's operations?
Very familiar, yes.
Were you present for my introductory comments?
I was.
Were they accurate to the best of your knowledge?
They were.
I'm going to ask you to bring up the rendered site plan, which is Exhibit A 16, please.
Can everyone see my screen?
We can. Maybe you can zoom in a click or so, just so we can see the plan. Perfect. I think that's good. So I can see that Route 9 is at the bottom of this screen, and so north would be to the right and south would be to the left, correct?
That is correct. So essentially, the site layout has been shifted 90 degrees clockwise.
Okay, and you don't need to switch exhibits, but can you first tell us generally the, the existing conditions on this particular lot?
Yeah, so currently on site, there is the existing, what's the old Garden State Sign Facility. There's an existing sign out front located closer to Route 9. There's two driveways. Both will call it the north and the south side. If you're looking at the plan, it's the, the bottom right and the bottom left. The current building on site's just over 4,000 square feet in size, masonry, completion. And then the property itself is 1.35 acres within the zoning district, the highway development zone, HD1. That is actually an undersized lot. All the parcels surrounding the property are also located in that same highway development zone. So the properties in the north, south, east, and across Route 9 as well are located in that same zone. There is a slight mound at the south side of the property or plan left as you go towards Walmart. This creates more or less a berm on the property line. Around the edges of the property line, there are invasive species of landscaping. Generally, the site is overgrown. There's areas of broken asphalt and gravel areas throughout the, what was the old parking lot. And really, what you're looking at is a property that has a unique shape and it's, and it's fashion. There's no parallel lines. Really, what happens is across the front, which is just over 190 linear feet of frontage, 200 is permitted, is required within the zone. So we have a non-conformity for the lot frontage. It kind of tapers back to a larger rear property line as you look at it from Route 9. So it's a unique situation. We don't have a conforming lot frontage, but as you go further back, we have more, we'll call it lot depth in the- Um, we have more, we'll call it lot depth in the back of the property. Um, there is a twenty foot easement located on the north side of the property plan right. Um, this is a generally a grading and access easement, or sorry Greg, a grading easement. That runs more or less the entire northern property line and that locates that. That is located, you know, in constraining the northern part um of the property. There's no existing um sidewalk across the front.
Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, it's all good.
Uh, so looking at exhibit A, A sixteen. I can obviously see that you've superimposed a color version of our proposed site plan onto. A zoomed in version of an aerial photograph. Is that correct?
That is accurate.
And does this exhibit accurately depict what we are asking the board to approve this evening?
This does. Yeah, this is more or less a colorized site plan uh of the site plan submitted, and we've more or less layered on the aerial. And taking in consideration some of the plantings and the landscaping plan um onto this colored rendering rendering.
For the benefit of the board members, can you uh give a a brief overview of what we propose as a layout on the site, starting with access?
Yeah, of course. I I always like to run the board through kind of the operations as if we were going to go take a car wash together. Um, so you'd enter the site through a right in, right out driveway uh located as far uh north in this case. Uh, from the Walmart driveway as far spaced out as we can be um to the adjoining multi tenant shopping center. Uh, you will enter the proposed side or the proposed right in, right out driveway. You'll pass by the proposed um sidewalk area. This will run the entire frontage more or less extending uh the Walmart sidewalk through and across our property. Over a hundred and ninety linear feet of sidewalk that is being proposed. You'll enter through the site. You'll enter to the two way access point. Um, you will continue north or actually be across the northern property line and you'll bypass um our bug wash uh prep area. If customer, this really is intended for customers to pull off, there'll be the ability to apply a high pH uh bug solution. So in case you have, uh, we'll call it the the nasty bugs that won't get off, you'll be able to apply this before actually entering. The the car wash facility. Um, so it's a pull off area before you enter uh the main queuing area. As you continue back, there is a trash enclosure located as far to the rear, and this is really the top right hand corner. Of the building. Um, this is was going to be a mason or sorry, a fiber cement. Uh, enclosure. Um, the applicant is willing to. Turn this into a CMU block uh trash enclosure will provide a detail. Um, if this is acceptable by the board. Um, you'll pass that um and really from a loading perspective, essentially what we'll be doing here is we'll have um. A private hauler, one about one time a week um or as needed, um, that'll be accessing this single uh trash enclosure. Um, usually pickup times are about seven thirty AM. You and then as you pass through and by the trash enclosure, you'll enter one of our three pay stations, the furthest one out being our VIP lane. Uh, for our our subscription based um users, so the far outside land will be primarily meant. For those users, they'll have license plate readers over in booms that will be able to read the license plates. As you pull up into the kiosks that are covered, um, you can see them dashed over the top. These are covered uh pay stations. Um, we have over between the three pay stations, the capacity to handle over twenty cars that'll queue back without creating any issues as far as onsite circulation. Concerns all the way back um to uh we'll call it the exit movements for the property. Um, so there should be no issues when it comes to onsite circulation um from a a queuing capacity standpoint. As customers interact and you know, select their one of three options, they then pull into the single lane car wash facility. This is a five thousand two hundred and ninety four square foot express car wash, single lane. Um, it's good. It's good to know that the the actual use as an automated car wash is a conditional use. Uh, with no conditions uh specified within the same zoning code um for this district. I think um we we've talked enough about that, but uh all of our operations will be enclosed within the building. There is a roll up door that is used for day one installation. And then for ventilation for the actual interior uh car wash facility, we do have an office component. There'll be no retail sales associated with this. The idea is this to have a a place for the managers. Um, to be, it'll be in clear line sight to the pay stations as that's where most of our customer uh interactions will be. Um, is between the office and the pay stations. We'll have between two and five employees at any given time for the facility uh to hide to operate this. Um, you know, automated car wash, uh, one team leader and then as needed employees from there, depending on. Uh, the day and time um from for users. Uh, the the tunnel itself is a hundred and forty linear feet. Um, the building is longer and narrow in size to accommodate this kind of. Modern express car wash. Uh, it's a hundred and forty four linear feet by thirty six feet in length. Uh, the building does sit within the front yard setback. Um, sixty is permitted within the zone. We are currently sitting uh with the building at thirty nine point five. Also because of the configuration of the lot I talked about before, the the building does sit within the side yard setback, which is on the south side. Of the property closest to Walmart uh adjacent to that berm. Now it's the setback requires twenty five feet. We're sitting at. Twenty uh feet um and five or sorry, six inches off that um rear southern property line. We for about twenty feet, we have that issue and as you go further back away from the front of the property. That variance condition does uh eliminate itself. So about twenty feet um past uh the front of the building. That variance condition does go away. So where you see the sixty foot setback, um, that's where the that conflict stops. Hours of operation within the building will be from eight AM to eight PM. Um, employees will be there about an hour early. Um, so seven AM and to nine PM, so they'll be onsite either getting everything ready or closing down. Uh, about an hour before and an hour after closure. Uh, once customers exit the the facility, they'll be entering a heated uh concrete pad. This is to just to make sure there's no icing. Uh, as you exit uh the facility, again, all operations, there's no hand drying. Everything is within the building. You will then exit out of the um the tunnel. You'll have the option to either proceed to the vacuum spaces, which are. We're calling ancillary to uh the actual car wash facility or leave outside our right in, right out driveway along Route nine. If a customer decides to proceed, um, maybe heading west into our twenty four parking spaces. Um, they will have the option to pull into the vacuum spaces. These are overhead booms, each part, each parking space, there's a vacuum space, there's nineteen of them. Um, we'll have the ability to have a boom on either side um of the actual parking space. They're oversized parking spaces. They're twelve feet by nineteen feet of effective usable space. Um, going all the way um all the way north into the ADA parking space. There there is one eighty in parking space. It also has access to a vacuum space, so it could be considered a vacuum space. We call nineteen but twenty um in theory could be used uh for vacuums. There will be four employee designated parking spaces located on the south side. Uh, we have a number twelve. Uh, there's the first two on either side of either row. We have twenty four foot or twenty foot drive aisles. Uh, separating the two twelve foot or twelve parking spaces. And at the end of each one of these boom, there's a microfiber towel um and some other amenities uh for our customers as they. Um, you know, use the vacuum. What we're seeing for customer time, it could be as as quick as five minutes. It could be as long as fifteen minutes for people cleaning out their cars. So as really as part of having a successful automated car wash, we need to have this number of vacuum spaces associated with this. Um, you know, call it length of our car wash facility. There's also a Rhino mat. Essentially, it's a self enclosed um mat cleaner um located against the building. Will have bike parking spaces in front of the building. That'll have access to our um accessible pathway to that proposed sidewalk that I talked about earlier. Um, if a customer, once they're done with the cleaning of their vehicle, is able to exit out the rear of the property and head south. Down and out of the exit, that is again a right out uh movement and heading down to southbound US nine. Um, from a stormwater standpoint, we're proposing two uh infiltration basins, one located at the northeast corner. Uh, so it's right off the entrance and the one at the southwest corner. Um, that'll be giving us our necessary reductions as we are a major development. Um, we're required to be through NJDEP's requirements for major development. Provide uh fifty percent removal or fifty cent reductions uh in the the two year storm, also um seventy or twenty five percent reductions. In the ten year and then during the hundred year storm event, it's required twenty percent reductions. We'll meet that through those two basins. Um, those bases also provide us with our TSS removal um to comply with water quality measures. And the applicant will agree to comply with any water groundwater recharge requirements um for the facility. Um, from a lighting standpoint, as a car wash user, it's what we consider a high turnover uh user. Um, so we want to make sure that our customers have the proper illumination uh for the facility. Uh, we are proposing five area lights scattered around the property to fully illuminate the property. Um, there'll be twenty two. Uh, actual LED lights on those poles to ensure that there's adequate lighting uh in the areas uh the customers are um. Using those um we'll call it high uh intensive, you know, areas. Um, what is permitted within the um. Within the zoning code is the average of a point five. We're exceeding that at three point one. It's one of the waivers that we are requesting. There's no spill over the property line uh above what's permitted. However, we want to make sure that the areas that our customers are using are adequately lit. Lights will be shut off um uh about an hour after the closing uh and same with. The um the signage that are will be illuminated that we'll talk about in a little bit. From a landscaping perspective, um, we can just, everyone can see visually the landscaping that is proposed. There is an extensive amount of landscaping. We are removing some of that invasive native species throughout the property and. And adding a lot of uh ornamental grasses. Um, there's almost five hundred um different ornamental grasses segmented in different areas. Uh, we're proposing forty six trees, three of which will be across the frontage of the property. Uh, we couldn't fit all of the park, all the necessary trees across front due to some of the utility conflicts that we had. Um, as um there is only a limited amount of frontage that we have to work with to fit all of um the the necessary landscaping. There'll be sixty five shrubs, again scattered throughout to make sure we're properly um screening uh the parking spaces. After two to four years, they will be um no short than thirty three feet in height, especially on the perimeter. Um, of the parking spaces. Um, given that that kind of takes care of.
Yeah.
Most of this, the the only only thing I I do want to add is regarding the utilities. I know we don't like to talk about utilities too much. It's um a a major component, though, of a car wash facility. Um, you know, we are proposing actually three reclaimed tanks located. Um, we'll call it adjacent to it's the north side of the building. Uh, there there are two thousand gallons that work in uh EPs. They work in series um to help um reduce. The amount of water consumption that this uh facility actually would use. All the products that we're using will be biodegradable, an OSHA approved. Um, as part of this application and part of previous applications, uh sanitary and water have been. Um, a concern to get to the property. So as part of the application, the applicant will actually be extending. Uh, it's water or sanitary connection over six hundred feet to the north um to connect into the nearest gravity system. Um, so it's part of the application uh as well as extending the water line uh further north as well to connect to the nearest available of. Um, water service. So that's what's kind of led to the issues in the front with um not being able to provide that additional um tree uh across the front.
Anything else, Jake, on that?
No, I I think that's it.
Um, a follow up question or two, and then we're going to move into the the variances that we require. Do you know what the proposed hours of operation are for this car wash? I realize it's subject to change, but what are the initial hours that are proposed?
Eight AM to eight PM, seven days a week.
Okay, so when you talked about lighting, do you know when those lights will go off or be turned? Some of them will be turned off?
Yeah, they'll be they'll be turned off uh an hour after closing.
Okay, so if the hours don't change beyond what you just said, the lights will go off by nine o'clock every night, correct?
Correct.
Other than security lighting or wall mounted lighting?
That is correct.
Okay, um. I don't think you mentioned it. I apologize if you do, but how are we going to, what kind of trucks are we going to receive deliveries in? And how are we going to manage that?
Yeah, so uh for this facility, car wash facilities, uh all we need are small box trucks. Um, they are. Used about once a week or as needed. Um, they'll actually park um in the ADA parking space. This will happen off hours or when no one's. Um, sorry, when the facility is closed, so uh there's no interaction with customers, so they'll park in the ADA uh parking space and unload. Um, into uh the main components for the 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 bit, the double doors, uh which house uh most of the equipment for the facility.
Uh, let's talk about the the variances that we need that are not related to signage.
Mr. De Luca?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, before you do that, I'd like to ask Mr. Modesto a question or two.
Sure.
So Mr. Modesto is. When the facility is not open, is there a gate that's going to prevent access to the site? On the egress ingress or is it going to be wide open?
It'll it'll be left wide open. So you're talking about the right in, right out driveway here?
Yep.
It'll be left open.
Okay, so immediately what comes to my mind is title thirty nine. You know, and I'm just letting you know, Mr. De Luca, that's one of the things that we like to see. When the site is unmanned and we don't like vagrants, you know, on the property.
Mr. Chairman, we're happy to agree to a condition of approval for ti- title thirty nine enforcement. No, no problem.
The other question I have, Mr. Modesto, is you you said handicap, but is there a a public restroom? Uh, for anybody who is going through the system, getting ready to vacuum and all of a sudden has a need.
There is, yes.
And where is that located at?
It's located adjacent to the office building centrally, more in the northeast corner. You can see it kind of implanted um in our building footprint here.
Excellent. Okay, um. Before we uh go through the engineer's report, does any of the board members have any questions for Mr. Modesto?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, could you pull up the the whole drive through so I can get the whole property right now? Cause right now we're zooming in. Um, when the employees come in. How with the arrows, the way they are, it almost seems like they have to go through the car wash in order to end up and, you know. Coming into park, you know, diagonal. Is that? Um, and also can people come in, just use the vacuum and how do they get to the vacuums without? Having to go, because I'm just looking at the arrows and I'm just curious.
See, you set me up for this one pretty well here. So basically what's happening is again, our employees will be there ahead of time. It's only two to five. Uh, at any given time, they will uh be directed to actually cut across uh into the one way. It's the least amount of conflicts. Um, the entrance, it's really the exiting, um, you know, from the tunnel. So there should be limited, no conflicts um of any customers. Uh, and they'll park into their designated parking spaces. Um, now the vacuum spaces are ancillary. To mod wash in their operations. So the intent and with the striping. Um, is actually to make sure people are being directed directly north into the queuing. Um, so it's not meant to be free to the public. It's meant to be ancillary to a car wash use. So that's why that's that striping is there. Um, we we want to make sure that the general public is heading north into the pay stations as much as possible.
Mr. Modesto, will the vacuums be turned off after we close?
Yes.
The Martins, are you satisfied?
Yes, I mean, you know, just if the employees are coming early in the morning, I mean, I don't see that being an issue. I just. It was just more like it was kind of a puzzle to me how they were going to get there without going through the car wash, but. You know, I'm 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 okay with that.
Okay.
The employees with very clean cars.
That's right.
Mr. Hughes?
I I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gonzalez?
No, thank you.
Mr. Moretti? Big Jim, are you with us? Eileen, I can't.
No, no, I'm all right. I'm back. I'm I'm there. I'm there.
All right, very good. Thank you, sir.
The dumpster. Look at the dumpster, the way it's set up.
Yes.
If the person, if the dumpster is picking up stuff. And how are these three cars going to get into those lanes and how is that dumpster? And how is that dumpster going to? Are they going to back up into that area? And then come back out the driveway? How are they going to move around that dumpster?
So we're expecting a front motor to drive directly into it, and we've run a vehicle to to pull directly into it. Again, this will happen before operations are open at about seven thirty AM. The vehicle will then back up. Into the emergency ax lane or the access point and then pull out with normal flow. So. The the conflict points are are very limited. And again, all when the with the actual facilities closed.
Mr. Moretti, good?
It's good to me.
Great. Mr. DeLuca, now on to the the engineer's report. Go ahead, sir.
So I just got to get into the only remaining things I want to cover with Mr. Modesto is the variance relief that we need. Including the signage and just a few things that he hasn't already covered. From the review letters, which I think he's covered most of it already. So I'll move as quickly as I can. So, Mr. Modesto, first, we need relief relating to the size of the lot and the width of the lot, which you've already covered. The lots required to be eighty thousand square feet in the HD one zone, and this is fifty eight thousand six hundred and eighty square feet. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And the lots required to be two hundred feet wide and it's one hundred and ninety point four feet wide, right?
Across the front, yes, it is.
Right, so scroll down a little bit, please, Jake, and you've already testified that we need a variance for the front yard setback. We're supposed to have sixty feet under the ordinance and we have thirty nine point five feet, correct?
That is correct.
And the side yards required to be twenty five and we have twenty and a half, right?
That is correct.
Now, why are we proposing those two variances as opposed to moving the building back and over to meet those two ordinance requirements?
Really has to do with proper site circulation. In order to make this facility work for all vehicles on the road, we've actually run an F two fifty through and around. So this is. As least of a variance that we can have and still make sure that we can accommodate all vehicles on the road. So that's really what's pushing everything forward. And it has to do with the nature of the use, too. This is one of the narrowest buildings that we have at thirty six feet. We have the tunnel component direct tunnel component and then the the associated equipment directly adjacent to it. So. With the nature of a car wash, it's a long, narrow building, and that's really what's driving a lot of this.
Okay, and so if we move the building back and over, if you scroll up a little bit or click out one, zoom out one.
Yeah.
Click, that would obviously, would would that result in inferior or superior circulation changes to what you propose now?
It would inferior. It's constrained. We're almost at the limits anyways. It's at we're at five feet from the property line. From a vertical or a depth standpoint, this this site was very challenging to accommodate. You know, the circulation that's needed for a modern car wash facility.
Now, we also require a variance to allow an accessory structure in the front yard. Can you illustrate to everyone where that is and why that is?
Yep, that's the vacuum producers located here. Essentially.
Sorry, what did you call them?
The vacuum producers.
What does that mean?
Those essentially run the chain of vacuums. Going across the top is the vacuum booms. Those are overhead fed, and these are located within that front yard.
And why are you locating them in the front yard?
It's it's a mean of series. So this is the what mod wash and all their operations have found at the location. As it relates to its their function, this is the most appropriately. Location, I think if you push it any further back, it'll conflict with the emergency access aisle. And potentially conflict with exiting vehicles. As the board can see, we've actually extended some of the curbs. These are rollover curves. This is what mod wash has learned through operating all of its facilities is that cars tend to not observe curbs as much as we all want them to. So they've actually accommodated for that. If we ended up putting that said vacuum in the back, people will find themselves. Conflicting with them. So we've located an area that we think would prevent that from happening.
Now, is it correct that those. Central vacuum areas in the front, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with the term that you use. That's that generates the vacuum function that will be used in the night. I think you said twenty vacuum booms, correct?
That is correct.
Twenty two. We don't have twenty vacuum boos with twenty vacuum motors, if you will, right?
That is correct.
Okay, and that helps from a noise management standpoint, does it not?
That is correct, yes.
We also need a variance relating to a retaining wall, specifically the retaining wall height. Can you just point out briefly where that proposed retaining wall is?
Yeah, that's located adjacent to one of our basins, located in the front yard setback. And is this, we'll call in the northeast corner of the property. And then that's a function just due to that narrowness of the site. We're restrained both from a topographic standpoint, working the berm in the south side of the property, going across and making sure we accommodate with. You know, DEPs, you know, new requirements. So this does comply with the new requirements from DEP. That involves the new green infrastructure. So that's really what's driving that variance is is a function of making sure we can comply. With those reductions in stormwater.
The ordinance allows a retaining wall like that of four feet in the front yard and eight eight feet high outside the front yard, correct?
That is correct.
And and how much, by how much do we exceed those limits and why?
Approximately a foot and has to do with the the grading. Component, and if we went up to eight feet in the front yard, it would become more of a visual obstacle.
So that's a quick, quick question. Just on the vacuums, can you just describe what they'll look like from the street and their dimensions, just because they're in the front yard setback, please?
Yeah, so I'm, I think I can best show this on our submitted plans to the board. This is. I think it's A eight on the plans, so everyone sees.
Yep.
Falls along. Just bring that over here. So they're overhead booms. They're twelve foot, six inches in height. They'll have the containers at the end be fed via overhead, an overhead system. The LED pole will be mounted across the the almost ten foot pole. And the microfiber and trash barrels will be located at the base of this. Just help answering the questions regarding.
Yeah, and just the producers, the producers at the at the front.
Yeah, the this is this is what the producer looks like. It's a simple machine. That just works all the booms in overhead fashion.
And are we willing to screen that if we're not already showing that on the plans?
We're screening it via land team as much as possible within those islands.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure everyone, including Mr. Bear, is clear on the the variance for the retaining wall height. How high is a retaining wall at its highest point in the front yard?
That was five feet.
And how high is it at its highest point outside the front yard, where it's allowed to be eight feet?
It's still consistently five feet across.
So is it correct that?
And then it taper and it tapers down as the grade comes back closer. To to match existing.
Okay, so Ms. Beam's letter states on page four that the proposed wall exceeds eight feet in height beyond the front yard setback. I just, is that correct?
I I believe we're talking about the the actual setback in the rear. Where that that wall does exceed eight feet in height.
And do you know by how much it exceeds that?
I can get that exact number.
Okay, and 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 why in that location, which is on the south rear corner, southwest corner of the site, do we exceed the height? Maximum height limit?
Again, it has to do with that that area being bermed up because of that the natural berm going against the property line for Walmart. That's really what's driving this.
Can you bring up exhibit A? A eighteen, please.
Mr. Del Dugan, can I just jump in there on the?
Sure.
Vacs there. Jake had mentioned they were screened. I just want to make sure I'm clear where they are. Can you? I'm sorry, Jake.
Yeah, no problem. Right up front here, and then thi- this was the area that we had.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so right now the landscaping there is just like ground cover. So I I'm assuming we're going to need something a little taller in those areas.
I I think we can work, I think, with the board's consultants in finding something that will fit in this location. It's a little tight. But we can find something, I think, if that's the board's available to that, adding something else in there beyond grass cover.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, bro.
Mr. DeLuca?
Yes, we're we're fine with that as a condition of approval.
Mr. DeLuca, I'd like I'd like to. To take a deep breath here.
Okay.
And give our engineer, Mr. Romeyer, an opportunity. Since we've gone over this site plan and we talk about berms and stormwater management and so forth. Mr. Romeyer?
Uh, yes, I believe Mr. Modesto addressed most of the comments. If it's all right. I would recommend maybe we go through the points of the letter. And if it's already been addressed, perhaps he can just say addressed, and then we could, I just want to make sure we hit every point, if that's all right.
Mr. DeLuca?
However, you'd like to proceed, Mr. Chairman.
That's how we'd like to proceed.
You got it.
Mr. Romeyer, you got it.
Okay. One second, please. Alright, so we've already started touching on the variances requested and providing testimony. On page four of the letter, so I'll continue with that. We just finished with the wall height. The next item was light intensity. I believe there was also already testimony on that. That the foot candles were exceeding the permitted amount. If we could get into the sign variance for the pylon sign area.
Yep, that's what I was about to get into was the signage. Happy to do that if you'd like us to do that now.
Sure.
So Jake, please bring up exhibit A nineteen.
A nineteen, start there, yeah.
So, does this show the proposed, excuse me, pylon sign?
This does, yes.
Now, I know when we initially submitted, we showed a pylon sign that probably looked like this, but it was about two hundred and six square feet, correct?
That is correct.
Now, the rectangle that's at the top, how large is that panel there, that sign panel?
Seventy seven square feet.
Okay, is it, my notes say seventy seven point eight four to be exact. Is that right?
Yes, yes, seventy, exact.
Okay, now, I I also know based on some discussions we had with the board's planner that about the, what we call the mod drop, which is that. Raindrop shaped image below that that says free vacuums on it. Have we, what do we agree to do with that?
We're going to eliminate that from the application.
Okay, and is it correct that we want to use the words free vacuums in the rectangular? Excuse me, excuse me. We want to use the words free vacuums in the rectangular pylon sign without increasing the size of that pylon sign.
That is correct.
Okay, and where is this pylon sign going to be located?
It's going to be located approximately twenty feet off the property line, located almost directly in front. We're going to go flip back to the site plan exhibit. It's going to be located in the front of the property between the building. And their front property line.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Romeyer, is there any other questions about the pylon sign?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, yeah, moving on to the the next was the sign variance for the total number of signs. If you could just describe how many and exactly what signs are proposed?
Of course. So there's a total of fourteen signs that are proposed throughout the property. I'm just going to go into it. Area by area really quick. I'm going to pull up A, sorry, A six that was previously submitted. And just walk the board through the building mounted signs. There's three building mounted signs. B, it's a a mod wash logo, a my drop. And then a another mod mod wash logo branding. So I'm just going to flip to. This is one of the pages. So this just simply shows the mod wash drop facing what would be the vacuum spaces. So this would be facing north. Then we have the mod wash logo, which would be facing south towards the Walmart. So those are two of our. Signs, and then we are proposing a third sign facing Route nine, which is simply the mod wash branded. Mod mod language and then the actual drop itself, the south side. Which is the mod wash logo is fifty four feet, fifty four point six seven square feet. The tunnel, the B noted as B, will be fifty four point six seven square feet. And then finally, the one facing, sorry, facing.
Route nine.
Route nine, yes, fifty four point six seven. Sorry, Route nine is thirty nine point three three square feet.
Okay, so that's all the building mounted signs, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, and we've already covered the pylon sign. So there's three building mounted signs and one pylon sign, correct?
That is correct.
So that's four signs. Then what else do we have?
So then we have a wait and go sign, which is located just outside the exit point of the facility. I'm just going to pull up A twenty one, just to give the board an idea of what this looks like. It's part of the operations for the facility to make sure customers aren't going too early when leaving the actual facility or going or. Basically letting them know it's okay to proceed forward in case there's a car in front of them or a car behind them. So that's really what this sign is for, is to help direct traffic, almost more of a directional sign than anything. But that's one of the fourteen signs.
Where will that be on the site plan?
That's located adjacent to. The pylon sign, just exiting out of the front or the exit entrance.
Okay, so that that's that's a fifth sign, correct?
Yes.
All right, what other signs do we propose?
And then these are the directional signs. I'm kind of lumping them all in as directional in nature. So basically, six of these. I'm going back to A six. It's the last page of A six. Six of these are really associated with our POS or our kiosk systems. So there's a screen and then a digital menu between, there's one POS screen and one digital screen. Per pay stations, that gives us six right then and there to operate this facility. So those are are six of our directional signs. And then there's three directional signs located around the property, one from entering off of Route nine. One to direct customers after leaving the actual tunnel itself to back to where the vacuums are. And then finally, an exit this way sign. I believe this sign was actually recommended to as well by the board's professionals to make sure that we're. Properly signaling people to exit the site instead of looping back on. So those are all nine of the directional signs, what I'm calling them, but total we have fourteen on the property.
Thank you.
Mr. Romeyer?
Yes, and do you feel they're all necessary for the site circulation and site safety?
I I believe so. You know, basically, the this way entering, we want to make sure customers know where the vacuums are and can properly. Make the maneuver into them. Exiting was actual recommendation as well to make sure customers not recirculate the site. And then exit out to Route nine and the enter this way. You know, we want to make sure customers are directed into the facility.
Mr. 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 Romeyer?
Okay, can you please continue on with the waivers requested?
Mr. Romeyer, I got a question.
Yeah.
Relative to the signs. If I have a pole sign. That is located. And it's. North and south. Why do I need a southbound or a south side badging? When we are trying to be very judicious in the amount of signage that we are. In Hallow Township.
That's a good question.
Yeah, Mr. Chair Say, I I think that, Mr. Modesto, I would like to hear a little bit more testimony. On why you need three facade signs and the pylon sign. You know, I understand wanting to, you know, market the business and show people, you know, where it is. But as the chair said, when you're driving up and down Route nine and you have that pylon sign. Why do you need signs on three sides of the building as well?
Again, it's it's more against part of recognizing up and down the street. I think in particular, it actually adds up another element for the architecture. We haven't quite entered the the elevations into it. But it does break up some of the the massing across the front of the building. So it's part of the brand and it's part of. Creating an aesthetically pleasing building that's associated with the actual use itself. So it's complementing that portion of the project.
And you show Luca?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Although, you know, that's an eloquent answer. I. You know, as Ms. Bell is mentioning, you know, in Hallow Township, we try to be very minimal. In the amount of signage that we place on our properties, right? We don't want it to look. minimal in the amount of signage that we place on our properties, right? Uh, we don't want it to look like it's Las Vegas. Right, you know, and um, so, you know, it, it, you know, we have ordinances in place. And um, you know, how far out of the uh, the right and left limits of the ordinance we're stretching can be a concern.
Right, I understand, you know, the need for the um, the digital menu signs and point of service signs to operate the business. And those are particular to the type of business you're running. Um, and are really, you know, they're not something that's visible uh, from the public right away. Um, but the amount of signs branding the building and the site just seem to be a bit excessive, I think.
So, you know, listen, we appreciate your comments and, you know, we had a discussion about this because uh, I'm not too surprised that this came up. So you have to balance, I guess, you know, the, the the interest of the applicant to properly advertise his business and, and obviously provide appropriate identification of their business so that motorists can identify and get in and get in safely. On the facade signs, clearly the least important of those three is this elevation to facing south or facing the Walmart. We added that because we wanted the people in the Walmart parking lot to see the car wash and people having, heading north on Route nine to see it, but qualitatively, I, I agree, or at least I, we thought. I thought that that was the least important from a site identification standpoint. So if, if the boards doesn't agree that that's necessary or appropriate or justifies a variance, we ask that that be the one uh, that be, that be modified or eliminated. We had talked before the meeting about changing that from a mod wash sign like you see to just a, what we call the mod drop or raindrop sign up there, which is more, you know, architectural in nature and is consistent with our branding. We asked the board for its consideration. We, we understand your concerns. The, the front elevation is critical to us and the elevation facing northbound so that the people driving down, you know, if they don't see the pylon, they, they'll see the, the building sign. Um, we've reduced the size of the pylon by about two-thirds uh, because, you know, we recognize that what we had shown before was, was too large. And I'm not sure if that was an oversight or, or just a realization later than we should have, but we think that other than that, the sign package seems reasonable. The other signs are directional in nature and I think are easily justified. And I, I agree with Ms. Bell as far as the uh, the kiosk related or point of service related signs. So that, that's all we have to say on the signs. We, we appreciate the board's consideration and we're prepared to move forward.
So Ms. Bell, if we remove the southbound south facing, I should say, sign, that helps.
I think, I think that certainly helps, yes.
Okay.
I, I don't know, um, you, you know, they are permitted to have two signs in the zone, um, uh, one of each type. So to me, that would be a pylon sign and a building sign. Um, but ultimately, you know, it's up to the board if they decide to grant them that additional um, building sign. I think that the directional signs, while they are technically signs, given the type of business, they make sense.
Roger. Board members?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, um, I kinda, I think the um, applicant has, you know, limiting that south one. I think that's, that's making some good headway here as far as I'm concerned. The only thing I was just gonna question on along Route nine, you did say uh, free vacuum. Would that mislead people to think that they didn't have to go through the car wash to have that? And you'd be getting a lot of traffic coming in?
So, th- this message is a critical part of our, of our branding. One of the things that we think is really important is to let people know, let customers know that if they get their car washed, they get the vacuum for free. So we, we thought it would be good to lose the mod drop to reduce signage because we anticipated the concerns that you've raised tonight. But not lose this app, important advertising message that we have free vacuums. Uh, we have employees not working all time that monitor it. So um, I, I think when you hear free vacuums, i- it certainly suggests that you need to be a customer, but that, that's the reality.
I, I agree. I, I would, I would certainly think the same thing, but I know probably some people are gonna be going down and they're gonna think that's gonna be free, but I, I, I get it. So it's not a, it's not a big factor. I was just, uh,
Mr. Mertens, it's a good question. You know, I would think you would say, you know, express car wash including vacuum or, you know, with vacuum or, you know, something to that effect. Because if you are saying some free vacuum, people are gonna think they could just come use the free vacuum.
Uh, it's interesting. That's the first time that question's come up and, and which is fine. I, I just hadn't thought of it before now. Uh, I, I think Mr. Argano is here, but I think that this is what they use with all their other stores. So they probably want to have some uh, consistency as far as the message. Uh, I'll defer to him on that.
Yeah, the i- i- it, it does happen. People will pull in and use the vacuum. It, it, I can't tell you it's never happened, but I would tell you it doesn't happen very often. And when you talk about the two to five people that work there, there's one person at the POS. There's one person at the, at the entrance of the um, the tunnel, and there's one person policing the entire vacuum area. That's the guy that, that's the person that normally is gonna stop people from coming in the wrong way. It's also the reason why we have the bypass. If somebody does come through and they need to get out because they came through the wrong way. So it, it I can't say it never happens, but I would tell you it does not happen that often. It's not a, it's not a huge problem after the first, like, few days and people realize what's going on. But it, it's not, it's not a big, it's not a big, it's not a big issue that we're, we have to police it a lot.
Okay, so you're gonna have somebody out there?
There's always somebody working the, the, the vacuum area. They're keeping it clean. They're supplying the different sprays for the interior and exterior to clean the car and the, all the different um, the microfiber wipes that we have, that you can do your windows with and you can drive, you know, if you want to do something on the car.
Okay, Mr. Yuz?
Uh, I'm good. My only real concern with the signs was the one facing Walmart and in fact, there was no entryway in from the Walmart parking lot. I thought that might be a little confusing, but it sounds like that one's off the table. So I'm, I'm good.
And, and then of course, the free vacuum sign on the, on the pole sign, we're taking that away as well. So they're still gonna need, you know, some relief because they want the northbound teardrop still in place.
I personally Um, one more question about the signage is uh, this color scheme like part of the company's branding or?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you.
It's every, every one of them look is, is like this. Can I ask one quick question on the sign on the Walmart side? Is, would, would there be any, any interest in putting something on that side to break up the white building wall? Maybe not a lit sign, something else?
Well, do you want to put, do you want to put a, a, you know, block glass or, do you want to put block glass or something to allow natural lighting?
Well, that, 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 there's no place for it to go over there, be honest. I'm just wondering, you know, if, not so much for the inside, but for the outside. I mean, I'm, I'm just asking the question. Cause we've had several places we, we've gone and, and they, you know, where we don't have something over there, especially on some sites that get close to the front. We get some comments about can you add something to get, bring some color to the white site. So I'm just I, I'm good with what we're talking about. I'm just, I'm just asked, cause I know I'm gonna get asked the question, but I'm just, I'm just asking the question, is, is there some option there that, that you might be comfortable with that kind of breaks up the, the, the color along the wall?
I would recommend adding, you know, some type of architectural feature or a false window even um, as opposed to an additional sign.
Okay, we'll, we'll look into it.
Mr. Moretti? Okay, not here, Mr. Moretti. Mr. Romaya, back to you.
Okay, just moving down the list with the uh, other waivers listed, they were previously uh, granted by the planning board during the June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one meeting. If the applicant can just provide testimony briefly on those.
You mean the submission waiver?
Uh, yes, the waivers.
Mr. Modesto?
I'm just pulling that, that exact size from between a couple of things here.
She, she, uh, page five of T and M's letter.
Got it. Um, so these have to do with the uh, the testimony regarding um, the sewage calculations. We'll provide that. Uh, I think I talked about that a little bit regarding some of our connections. We will need a TWA application uh, due to the length. Um, other proposed improvements, uh, so we can provide that. Um, I think there's no exceptions to uh, the waivers for national inventory report. The designation of all lots within two hundred feet. I think I covered all of them. And then a, a traffic control plan during construction. Um, that'll be part of anything with the, the DOT and Mr. Valeri can talk about it a little bit more if needed.
Okay, and what is the status with the NJ DOT permit?
Uh, I'd like to say we're close to the finish line now. We've had the application for a while. Um, they've had no comments regarding the location or type of access uh, for the application. Really what we're going down to is, is the nitty gritty when it comes to the utilities across the right of way. Um, and then the stormwater um, a component of this. So that's really what's driving, you know, comments that are leftover.
Okay, uh, just moving on, I listed a couple of their additional waivers required. Um, so with the utility department application and fees, you indicated that you'll agree to pay all required fees. Then five copies of all proposed written descriptions for checklist item seventeen. Uh, if you could just describe the, the landscaping grading easement um, and what the intent is to do with that?
Uh, the intent is to leave it as it's stated. It's a landscaping grading uh, easement. So there'll only be landscaping and grading components located within that. The trash enclosures located completely out of it. Um, and we'll provide any language needed um, uh, for that.
And are you maintaining access from Route nine?
Yes, there's a right in, right out driveway.
Now, the uh, to the access easement.
Uh, it, it's, it's a landscaping grading easement. Um, so it, it doesn't require, um, to our understanding, um, access. It's, it's simply to, to note, um, and I'm sorry, I don't have the, the actual benefactor of that. Um, but it's to denote landscaping and, and primarily, I believe it's, you know, landscaping um, throughout that, that buffer area.
Okay, yeah, my, my only comment was it appears you can get in uh, closer to Route nine just to get in there and maintain the landscaping and possibly from the, the rear of the property too. Checklist item sixty was talking about uh, ingress and egress. Um, we know the, for the circulation aisle width, we know the requirement conflicts with section one eighty-eight, one oh six F for, which requires main driveways for commercial sites to be thirty feet. Can you just confirm that there's adequate um, site circulation for the vehicles on site?
Yep, um, so we ran F two fifty um, through the property. We've run our, our loading vehicles, trash vehicles. We've, we've actually ran the fire uh, department's vehicles uh, and met with uh, the fire marshal regarding this application is one of the first things that we did do. Uh, we can confirm and have submitted uh, those truck turnings part of the application. So as far as access in and out of the property with any vehicle, um, we feel very confident with the, the sizing. Uh, is it being adequate? And then there are a few areas I think we are requesting waivers for as drive aisles. Uh, but those are just a few pinch points as we get closer to the pay stations.
Okay, thank you. And then regarding the pedestrian walkways, you've read testimony on ADA accessible routes and parking?
Yep, um, so we are proposing that sidewalk across the front. So by ADA code, we're required to connect to it. Um, and that's the route shown um, coming from Route nine, heading back through. So pedestrian pathway uh, from the ADA parking space located at the closest accessible entrance, uh, which is located actually at the rear. We provide an ADA accessible path all the way across the front of the building. Um, and then down and across into the front of the property. So that will be ADA compliant uh, in slope and size.
Okay, thank you. And regarding street trees, you already mentioned um, due to the utilities, you're unable to meet that requirement, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct. There's three trees uh, planted across uh, what we'd say evenly spread apart would put us through waters are you kill, a utility corridor. Um, so we can't quite plant it there as would conflict or create issues uh, subsurface. So that, that's the reason for that request.
Okay, and then there was two waivers for a parking lot screening and a five-foot screening strip. I would defer uh, comments to the board LTE tree expert. Let's see. The general items of discussion, you've already went through most of these hours of operation, employees, traffic, deliveries and garbage. So, the debris that gets stored on site, either in the vacuum containers or anywhere else, how does that get disposed of and how often?
Uh, I believe it testified being once a week. Uh, so yeah, at the end of the base of each one of these booms, there is a receptacle. Uh, that employee that Zurgagandra was talking about, uh, will actually come through, collect that and then dispose that at the rear of the pa- uh, property. Um, we're seeing that being once a week. Um, that'll be happening off hours approximately seven thirty AM.
Okay, there's no other auto repair or other maintenance services proposed, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, regarding the bug wash area, you mentioned some of the, or all of the uh, materials used are environmentally friendly, OSHA compliant. So where are those fluids going to drain?
Um, in, in that particular uh, location, I had to look at the grading plan. Um, but I mean, that, that's just a high pH uh, balance that would be placed onto the actual um, vehicle or sir, uh, vehicle bumper or windshield. Um, I can give the exact location we would drain, but it would be uh, collected as part of the um, the system.
Uh, to your knowledge, does that need to drain to the sanitary or the uh, the stormwater?
Uh, I believe it was the stormwater. I can get back to you on that as far as uh, the OSHA um, dot biodegradability of that.
Okay, and yeah, same thing with the Rhino mat cleaner area. Um, how does that work?
Rhino match is a self-contained um, apparatus. Uh, you basically put in your, your mat, uh, and it cleans it for you. There's no um, we'll call it um, the chemicals used that would be need draining. Um, you know, basically, uh, an employee would come in and service that um, separately.
Okay, I just wanted to talk about the guide rail that's proposed. Um, it's shown along the retaining walls, is that correct, on the top?
That is correct, and it's part of the, you know, customer safety to make sure no one conflicts uh, with that retention or sorry, that infiltration basin across the front of the property. And that's northeast. That's the reason why we have that.
Okay, and there's no issue with the construction of the wall with the uh, guide rail posts or anything like that?
No, and we can provide any necessary details.
There's no loading area proposed, is, uh, can you provide a reason for that?
Uh, just the type of uh, loading facility that we have and the operator that we, we are, we have in this location. We don't need large vehicles. So we're trying to reduce the amount of uh, pervious surfaces. We don't have a lot of space on the property. Um, so we found an operation location where essentially we can double dip in, in uh, the ADA parking space. We're not adding um, additional pervious surfaces that would require more uh, basin size. So it really has to do with the frequency and the sizing of vehicles.
Okay, um, there's a roll-up door on the south side of the building. Uh, we know there's no concrete pads or pavement um, linking this area. What's the purpose of the, the roll-up door?
You've identified to that, but that essentially is for day one installation um, of equipment. And then it's actually a ventilation uh, in, in case it um, and employees need uh, just to actually ventilate the um, the main tunnel because it's located on that side um, of the building.
Okay. Um, you are proposing sidewalk along the Route nine area. It's subject to DOT approval. Um, our comment for that would be if the DOT does not permit the sidewalk for whatever reason, then there would be a contribution required to the sidewalk trust fund. And you agree to that?
Yeah, I, I think we can agree to that.
Uh, and just regarding the certified two hundred foot property owners list. The applicant indicates, the applicant has provided an updated certified two hundred foot property owners list. And uh, we would just defer to the review of that to the board attorney to confirm adequate notice was given. And uh, we would just defer to the review of that to the board attorney to confirm adequate notice was given. Regarding the site grading and drainage. The applicant should be required to root the impervious impervious areas separately. So would you be willing to revise the stormwater calculations in accordance with the stormwater comments?
Yep, and I think this is, you're looking back at the April twentieth uh, letter. We try to address as many uh, of these comments, especially relates to grading and stormwater as possible. Uh, before coming in front of the board, there's a few outstanding, but we fully intend to comply. Uh, continue to work with you uh, to address these.
Okay. At the traffic comments, we'll save for your traffic engineer. You've already spoke about the lighting. And security lighting overnight. Um, just a few other comments for the uh, environmental and utility items on sheet fifteen. If you could provide testimony on the hot boxes uh, that will be required for the proposed water service. Um, have you finalized that design yet?
Uh, we're still working through that design. Um, so it has been finals. If if one is needed, we'll make sure it's not located within the front yard. So we'll have to continue to work through that, but if one is needed, um, we'll make sure it's not in the front yard.
Okay, and yeah, it looks like same for the electrical service.
We know the transformer located at the rear of the property. Um, so we don't think that'll be a conflict.
Okay.
The Rome.
Yes.
Is that roller curtain door? Pull chain or is it automatic? Automated?
I'd have to look. The applicant can uh, comment on that, please.
Either Mr. Modesto or Mr. Gergano.
I believe that's uh, hand operated.
I believe it's hand operated also.
Uh, it appears an environmental impact report has not been submitted. Um, the applicant has indicated they'll submit revised environmental impact uh, report under separate cover. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Just describe how the uh, car wash drains, specifically where does all the water go and 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 uh, fully lead to?
Uh, are are we talking about the sanitary component? I think there was a conversation regarding there's a first twenty five, twenty feet um, of the entrance to the facility is actually pitched towards um, the the car wash facility. Uh, that'll be collected internally uh, to the facility uh, and routed through the sanitary system. Um, everything that is um, it was used within the building, be routed through our three reclaim tanks. Um, located on the north side of the building before entering the system. Um, obviously, a portion of that water will be utilized as part of our system. Um, again, reducing the amount of water uh, needed uh, for one of these modern express car washes.
Okay, and if you could just describe how the reclamation system works and what kind of waste it would produce?
Um, so essentially, i- it works very similar to a grease uh, grease trap. Basically, it enters the the, we'll call it the first, it's the middle. Container, it's two thousand gallons in size. Uh, portions will basically backflow into um, one of the, the it's the northern one. Um, and then flow through several baffle systems uh, before um, be either being reused or discharged um, through the process. And we we've submitted details of those as well as part of our package.
Okay, that's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Share, I'm sorry, I had my microphone off before.
Mr. Moretti, do you have anything for?
Just one question, the uh, the routing uh, schematic, can I see that again? There was something that caught my eye and I didn't ask on it. To be uh, one showing the exits and the entrances and all of that in the uh, the sign, the signage.
A six.
Yeah, no problem. We just slipped to that real quick.
Last page.
So we're talking about?
Yeah, this here went to the right, this way, that arrow goes to that way. Everything else is flowing to the right. This is flowing to the left. Am I reading that incorrectly?
Uh, that would be.
See the second one up says?
Yeah, they're just showing what it says so you could see it, but it'll actually be pointing away from Route nine when it's installed.
Yep.
Going on the top?
Yeah, the one that says this way.
Yeah, okay, because I'm seeing, I'm saying, all the other arrows are going to the right. This one's going to the left. I'm saying.
I think we just oriented this way, so it would be easier to read on the piece of paper, but in the field, it'll be pointing to the.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Me to the west, yep.
To the north.
To the north.
Hey, Mr. Moretti, you're good?
Yes, sir.
Good. Mr. Romaya, thank you. Ms. Bell, do you have any questions? Would you like to go over your?
Um, I think I can save most of my letter uh, for later on, but I did want to confirm uh, earlier tonight. They agreed to a uh, ma- making a block trap enclosure, correct?
Right, that is correct.
Thank you. Um. I guess if you could just, um, you talked about fences and walls already, lighting, landscaping, but that's really shary. So I think I think I'm okay for right now.
All right, then then I'll go. Um, you do have to ask for um, a waiver from the board to pay the contribution fee. I'm sorry, did want you to put that on the record.
We are requesting to pay that in lieu.
Okay, just so the board uh, knows, you know, after deducting the trees that they're planting on site, they are asking for a waiver to pay. It's uh, comes out to twenty seven thousand nine hundred dollars to the tree fund. And then uh, I I agree, we don't need any more street trees along Route nine. That 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 makes sense. Um, regarding the landscaping, uh, you had mentioned you would hit three foot in a few years, but um, the ordinance requires the parking lot to be screened by a three foot head that install. So right along um, Route nine front edge, I'm sure we could work on just finding shrubs that would be higher. Right now, there, I think Nepeta, which is a low growing perennial.
Yeah, a- and then if it's acceptable to the board, um, I'd prefer that our offices work together to find a a solution um, to properly screen that.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. And then the other comment, the five foot strip, that really is just that section on the north side of the driveway. The landscaping just didn't continue, so also easy to correct.
Great.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Sparrow. Board members. Any questions before we turn it back over to the applicant?
I think I'll wait till I hear from the traffic testimony. I just had one question regarding that.
Got it. Okay, Mr. De Luca.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my questions for Mr. Modesto as well. So we'll move to our traffic engineer, Andrew Valeri. Andrew, are you there?
I'm here.
Can you give a wave to everybody so we see who you are there? Thank you. You've already been sworn, so why don't we also have you begin with your professional background?
Certainly. I received my Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from the University of Delaware. I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I've been accepted as an expert witness in the field of traffic and transportation engineering in front of numerous similar land use boards throughout the state as well as others in the northeast.
Mr. Chairman, we ask you to accept uh, Mr. Valerius an expert in traffic.
We accept.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Valera, did you prepare the traffic study that was submitted with this application uh, last revised February eleventh, twenty twenty two?
That is correct.
And in that report, did you evaluate whether this car wash will have a material adverse impact on the surrounding roadway network from a traffic volume generation standpoint?
That's correct.
And what did you conclude?
Our conclusion was that this use is not a high traffic generating use. It is something that I think makes a whole lot of sense for the highway business district that it's in, although we are requesting uh, a relief for a conditional use. It just makes a whole lot of sense that this site is located on a highway, so um, not a high traffic generating use, far less of a traffic generating use than other uses you could have in this zone. Um, restaurant with drive-through is a permitted use. So in the grand scheme of things, I think this is actually a a great application. Uh, that that balances a necessary use for the traveling public, but does not attack, associate with it high traffic generating uh, qualities.
And Mr. Modesto talked briefly about where we are with DOT. Have you been involved with that process?
Yes.
It had, to the best of your knowledge, has DOT concluded that these driveways will operate at acceptable levels of service and uh, and otherwise with relation to traffic volume?
Yeah, that that's correct. We've been working with the DOT for about a year now. We've received uh, two full review letters from the state. Um, there's been no indication from the state that there's any issue with the use, the traffic generating qualities, the design of the driveways. Um, they're on board with with everything, but as Mr. Modesto mentioned, we do have to go through the technical um, uh, the technical requirements for stormwater design, uh, soil testing, those highly technical uh, pieces of information is what we're currently working through.
Okay, now this property is in the HD one zoning district, correct?
That's correct.
And you you alluded to this a moment ago, but isn't it correct that the HD one zone permits a a broad variety of commercial uses?
That's true.
And is it correct that multiple uses permitted in this zone would generate more traffic than a car wash using the ITE uh, trip generation manual that you use?
That is absolutely correct.
Uh, and th- the DOT review, or excuse me, the DOT, will this driveway location uh, and operation satisfy all applicable DOT requirements as far as clearance from property lines and otherwise?
Yes, this, the 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 site design as proposed meets all of DOT's driveway spacing requirements.
Okay, and do you believe there will be any uh, adverse impact on the Walmart driveway as a result of putting our driveway where we're putting it?
I do not. The Walmart driveway, just for reference, is about two hundred and twenty feet further south on Route nine. Uh, that is eh, as far as possible uh, where we can locate a driveway on our site. Our our driveway is as far to the north as the DOT permits, so we are uh, promoting the best amount of spacing possible along the site frontage.
Okay, and we're reducing the number of curb cuts that exist today, correct?
That's correct. There's there's two curb cuts presently, and we need the access permit from the DOT to do work in the right of way, clean up uh, the two existing curb cuts, build uh, NJ DOT spec driveway, and then also build the sidewalk in the right of way.
Uh, and the, this is a a car wash of about fifty two hundred square feet on a very busy state highway. Will the overall volume of cars added to the state highway be significant compared to uh, the volume on that state highway?
No, there's almost forty thousand vehicles a day on on Route nine in this in this corridor, so this would be a a drop in the bucket.
Do we meet the po- uh, ordinance as far as number of parking spaces that are required?
We do. Uh, ten are required by code and a total of twenty four spaces are proposed. But as Mr. Modesto mentioned, uh, the majority of those spaces double as vacuum spaces.
Okay. Uh, as far as circulation, um, Mr. Modesto has walked the border or testified as to the circulation. Uh, are you satisfied as a traffic engineer that the onsite circulation is safe and efficient?
I am.
Uh, are you satisfied that the layout of the parking and the number of parking spaces are adequate, safe and efficient?
I am.
Are you satisfied that pedestrian access in relation to traffic and our interaction with vehicles is is appropriate, safe and efficient?
I'm I'm in agreement there, yes.
Okay. Have you consulted with any fire officials relating to emergency access?
We have, and we have uh, provided in the submission package a uh, auto turn simulation for the Howell Township uh, fire truck navigating through the site, and it does so adequately.
Okay, and in your opinion, is the circulation and access for trash vehicles and delivery vehicles uh, appropriate, safe and efficient?
Yes, especially considering the the frequency or infrequency of of deliveries to a a use like this.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, other than asking Mr. Valeri to address a few of the comments in T and M's letter, that's all the questions I have. I can have him do that, or we can have Mr. Romaya do that. A few.
Let's have Mr. Romaya do that, please, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Um. Regarding the adequacy of the four nine foot wide by nineteen foot long parking to service the employees, can you describe where the employees will be parking?
Certainly, on the site plan, the uh, parking spaces that'll be for employees will be located as uh, towards the bottom of the page, the bottom spaces that are, I guess, located closest to Route nine. I guess that's east on the plan.
Could you bring that up? We can see it.
Sure, just give me one moment.
Andrew, you want me to bring it up?
Oh, that'd be great.
Why don't you do that, Jake? Thanks.
And will there be any signage for employee parking?
I do not believe that there will be. The only difference with those parking spaces that Mr. Modesto is motioning with his cursor is that they uh, do not have the vacuum spaces. So that's why we believe that they're well suited for employees.
Okay. So the southerlymost driveway before you exit the site, um, we just have a note on here, if you eliminated some of the spaces above that, you could possibly make it a two-way drive aisle. Um, would you feel that would be an appropriate change?
I I do not, and and the reason is, is the vacuum spaces are intended to be used as an amenity post car wash. Um, and the idea being that we don't want to entice or invite the general public to come and use the vacuum station, so that's why we've designed it such that, you know, ninety nine percent of traffic going to the uh, the the vacuum station does so after the car wash. And I believe where the line of questioning is going is how how do employees get to those spaces? And I'll reiterate what Mr. Modesto had mentioned uh, earlier in the presentation. All of the employees will get to the site prior to opening at eight AM. They'll do so maybe between seven thirty and and eight AM. And they will temporarily ignore the signage and striping on the site and then make a a left turn where Mr. Modesto's cursor is, which is against the the flow of traffic. But since there's nobody else on the site, it'd be dormant. Um, we believe that this is a a good use of the si- of of the site and also a good design for the intended use of all of these spaces here.
Okay.
It is also a a twenty foot wide drive aisle, which is actually a little, a little bit uh, wide for a one-way drive aisle. There will be signage and striping that indicates it's one way towards the uh, north, back to Route nine. Um, but it it is sized sufficiently to get two-way traffic in and out of there.
Okay, I I understand your uh, reasoning. There is a waiver requested for that drive aisle, but um, the re- your reasoning is because you want it specifically direct traffic that way. Uh, I I think that makes sense. Um, the fire truck turning plan shows the the wheels going over a couple of concrete curb islands. I'd recommend those be reinforced with six inch thick concrete and steel reinforcement. Uh, would you be willing to show that on the plan?
Absolutely.
Then, in your opinion, in the busiest time, how many customer vehicles would you anticipate on site?
Less than forty over the course of an hour.
So that would be in the vacuum parking and also queued in the the wash line?
Correct, and it's spread out over the course of an hour, so I think one of the one of the benefits of the site design is how far the entrance to the tunnel is from the driveway on Route nine. You can fit upwards of twenty five vehicles in line before you have any impacts at the driveway. It's just never, the queue is never going to get that far back to the driveway, so there's no issues that we anticipate with the way the site's designed, uh, given the use.
Right, yeah, we wouldn't want to see the cars backed up.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, that's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Romar. Christine, any questions for the traffic?
No questions of this sweetness.
Fellow board members. Mr. Mertens. Mr. Hughes, let's jump to you.
I know, I was just leaning into to say that I'm, I'm good at this time, sir.
Okay. Mr. Moretti.
He's good.
Mr. Gonzalez.
No, thank you.
Okay. All right, Mr. De Luca. We're going to reserve the right to ask the traffic engineer another question when Mr. Mertens. Fair enough. He's not going anywhere, so we'll move on to Ms. Caphone, and we can always go back to Mr. Valeri. Ms. Caphone, are you there? There you are.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, I think this board probably is familiar, but can you briefly review your professional background unless asked not to do so?
Sorry, I'd be happy to. Good evening. For the record, Christine Nazaro Caphone, testifying this evening as a licensed professional and planner in the state. I've been testifying for 27 years as such. I have been qualified here in Howell and probably over 400 or so other planning and zoning boards throughout the state. I also teach planning and zoning courses for the Rutgers Center for Government Services. I'm an Affordable Housing Special Master in about two different municipalities or two dozen different municipalities, and my licenses are current and valid.
We accept your credentials, Ms. Caphone. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Caphone, just a few questions. Is it correct that the purpose of the HD one zone is to provide for highway oriented development in the Route nine corridor?
That is a statement of fact.
And is it also correct that that zone permits many commercial uses along this or in this location?
Correct, yes, numerous and many back commercial uses that, as Mr. Valari indicated, would be much more intense than the subject application.
And this, of course, ordinance also permits or lists a car wash as a conditional use in the HD one zone, correct?
Yes.
So we need a D1 variance because the case law says where you have a conditional use with no conditions, it's not considered a condition or permitted use. It's a prohibited use, correct?
All right, very peculiar little technicality there, but we are here seeking a D1 use variance to establish a use that is conditionally permitted in the HD one zone. Little hard to wrap your mind around that, but here we are.
Here we are. Can you briefly review your analysis of that D1 use variance with the board, please?
I can. So this is not something that you come across frequently. I have had to deal with this in other municipalities. I think the last one I had was a banquet hall in Point Pleasant. So this is not, Howell is not certainly the only place I've ever had to deal with this. But in my 27 years, I can certainly count on my one hand the amount of times we've been presented with the facts such that the zone allows the use conditionally, but then doesn't enumerate any conditions. So the board has to process the application at the zoning board of adjustment as a D1 variance. So as this board knows, that leaves us with the burden of proof to tell you why we believe the site or I believe the site is particularly suited for the proposed use. Mr. Modesto did a great job of walking you through the specifics of this particular piece of property and that it's undersized with respects to both lot area and lot width. He also talked about why the layout of this property, why did we, why did we choose the layout? Why is the car wash, which has a rather long and narrow building configuration to it? So in my opinion, those are the things that lead us, lead me to believe that the site is particularly suitable for the proposed car wash. It's existing undersized lot. And not only is this existing and undersized, but it's got an irregular lot line on that northeastern side. We have an irregular lot line. So all of those things set up that this site is particularly suitable for the proposed car wash facility. In addition to particular suitability, we have to demonstrate that special reasons exist. Now, statutorily, we would only have to advance one or more purposes of the land use law that would be advanced by the grant in this application. And I believe that there are three. And those purposes are certainly not unique to Howell. I didn't come up with them. They're right in the municipal land use law, section 40, colon, 55D dash two. Criteria G talks about establishing sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses. Very difficult to come to the planning conclusion that this is not an appropriate location when the ordinance specifically contemplates car washes as a conditional use. It's important to note that you have a master plan pending that it will allow for the creation of conditional use standards. Written into that master plan is a standard that car washes shopfront Route nine and Route 33. That is the condition that you're proposing to have in your master plan. So given the fact that the conditions that you have pending suggest presence on Route nine and Route 33, I think the board is certainly well within its right to rely on Criteria G, which talks about sufficient space in appropriate locations. I also think the board can rely on Criteria H, which talks about the design of transportation routes, which will encourage the free flow of traffic. Both Mr. Modesto and Mr. Valori, I think, set up great testimony as to how the circulation will flow efficiently and safely through the site. And moreover, that this will have less of an impact than some of the other uses that are allowable as of right in the HD one zone, which those uses include a convenience or a a restaurant with a drive-through, various types of medical and office. It's a very permissive district that allows a number of uses. So I think that that's certainly something the board can consider. And then Criteria M, which talks about coordinating the various public and private procedures which shape the development of lands with a view of a more efficient use of the land. This is an adaptive reuse of a site that's tired and in need of some rehabilitation and some revitalization. We like to call this in planning small R redevelopment, where market forces are encouraging the redevelopment of the property. And I think that this is certainly an efficient use of this site. It's really a well-thought-out layout for this site. So statutorily, that's our positive criteria. Again, we would have to advance one to satisfy the plan use law, but I, I believe that Criteria G, I and M are all advanced. In addition to that, we have to, we have to substantiate our burden of proof with respect to the negative criteria. And as Mr. Del Duca asked me when he started his opening remarks with respect to my, my direct testimony, that the stated purpose of the HD one zone specifically calls for providing highway oriented development in the Route nine corridor on lots that are larger than permitted in the AC, HC zoning district. And this application certainly does that. So when you're considering the negative criteria, I always like
Excuse me, Ms. Caphone, I apologize. I just want to make sure, Mr. Chairman, we didn't lose Mr. Mertens. Mr. Mertens has dialed in.
And he could hear everything. He just lost video. It froze on him, but he is back now.
Great. Just wanted to make sure for the record so there was no misunderstanding. Thank you, and I apologize for the interruption.
Thanks for letting me.
Go ahead, Christine.
At all. So the negative criteria does not ask you to hold us or any other applicant to such a standard that there be no detriment, just that the benefits of the grant to the variance would outweigh any detriment and would do so in such a way that we'd have no substantial detriment to either the zone plan or the public good. So the zone plan is, I think, a fairly easy one here in that we are consistent with that stated purpose. And we're less intense than some of those uses. Restaurants with drive-throughs, hospitals, medical centers, financial institutions, retail services, all of these things that are fairly intensive uses. So I think we're certainly consistent with that. And as far as the impact on the public good, I think we heard some really good suggestions tonight from your professionals as to, I think we were already coming in strong with a nice landscaping package that provided a great filtered view of the site. But I'm confident that, as was discussed with earlier professionals and the work of Ms. Bell, Ms. Spiro, and Mr. Romar's office, that we can even enhance that landscaping to provide for additional screening of those structures in the front yard. So I believe that we will be able to substantiate our burden of proof with respect to the negative criteria. And most importantly, when you look at the Medici reconciliation, which again seems a little bit silly to do on this application because we know that the HD one contemplates this use as a conditional use. And we know that the master plan that you have pending talks about introducing conditional use standards into the HD one zone. So I think we can certainly reconcile the Medici, the Medici proofs here because the use actually does contemplate the zone. And more importantly, one of the objectives in your 2019 master plan reexamination was to encourage the redevelopment and revitalization of vacant or underutilized properties. So this is certainly, and that's when I say small R redevelopment, it means a property that hasn't been gone through the statutory process of declaring it an area in need of redevelopment. But redevelopment is occurring in that we're demolishing the old structure and we're replacing it with a new one, which is a stated advanced or stated objective right in your 2019 reexamination report. So I believe that we statutorily certainly meet the standard of proof for the grant of a D1 variance. I've watched you through the particular suitability, the special reasons, both parts of the negative criteria, the Medici proofs and the reconciliation with the master plan and how we advance that. So it is my clear and specific opinion that we meet the burden of proof with respect to the D1 variance. With respect to the bulk variances, as this board well knows, they are subsumed into the D variants. But I think if you didn't consider it that way, you could certainly utilize the C1 statutory criteria, given the irregular lot lines for the justification of the side yard setback on the northeast. I think Mr. Modesto also did a great job of demonstrating that it's only a portion of that building, about 20 linear feet of that building, that actually violates that side yard setback. So that is certainly something the board can look at on that irregular property line there. And I guess the other thing we should talk about is the signs. My, my job got a little bit easier in that respect, given the fact that we got rid of the, some of the, some of the sign package. And particularly that sign on the south, I would agree that that would probably be the hardest one to justify as it needed the, and it needed relief for that. So I'm glad to say that we eliminated that because I think I agree with Ms. Bell's characterization that the directional signs are really necessary and they're really not visible from the road. So I think the board can look at the sign package as a combination of C2 that in the absence of any hardship, you can really move that sign package to C2 as a better zoning alternative, looking at the fact that we will promote the free flow of traffic, which is one of the purposes of the land use law. And certainly, you know, as a planner, I think signs really have three purposes to them. They are wayfinding. They have an architectural component in that they break up elements of the building, and then they advertise our buildings, right? Our master plan talks about repurposing vacant sites and wanting the sites to be economically viable. So they need to advertise. And I think that the sign package that mod car wash has designed here accomplishes all of those things, but still while being respectful of the ordinance in Howell as well as the surrounding properties. I don't think it's, it's too much. And as Chairman said, you know, we're working here in Howell to not have overly impressive sign packages. I think with the modifications that we've made, the board can certainly grant the relief for the sign package. With that, I know you've been listening to a lot of testimony on direct. So, Mr. Del Duca, unless there's something that you would like me to go back over or you feel that I didn't address on directs, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I do not have any other questions. Thank you, Ms. Caphone. Mr. Chairman, that play and presentation. Obviously, Ms. Caphone is available if anybody has any questions for her. Mr. Ms. Bell?
Um, no questions for Ms. Caphone. I would just kind of like to reiterate and elaborate what she said. Um, I certainly agree, you know, this is an irregularly shaped parcel. And I think the front and side yard setbacks really add to the circulation of the site. They wouldn't be able to queue as many cars and have the cars get around safely if not for those requested variances. As Ms. Phone said, and I, I did check with Jen Beam, the master plan reexam is recommending that car washes be conditional uses and the conditional uses be that they be permitted on Route nine south, on Route nine and also Route 33. And I agree that as Ms. Caphone said, you know, the master plan reexam from 2019 is encouraging the revitalization of vacant and underused properties. And that's obviously, you know, just always something we want to see in a town. So I think, given the particulars of this site, I think overall it's a good application. I do appreciate the agreement to remove the one sign. And I think it's important that the applicant continues to work with Shari to get the landscaping up to where she wants it to be.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. I believe it's two signs. The teardrop is also being removed from the pole.
Correct. The teardrop and the south elevation sign.
Thank you. So, Mr. De Luca? Yes, sir. You know, the pole sign, is that a lighted sign or is that going, and if it's, it is lighted, is it going to be shut off at night when everything shuts down? Mr. Modesto?
It is illuminated and it would be shutting off with the rest of the lights for the property.
Got it. Mr. Mertens, do you have any questions?
Yes, I did have a question for Mr. Valari. Unfortunately, I lost. I went frozen and I know I can see my video screen is kind of beeping, beeping a little bit. So, but I wanted to get one question if I may.
Sure.
Mr. Valari, um, how many cars till the people pay can this site accommodate is coming in to use the car wash all the way out to Route nine? Do you have any idea how many cars the property could hold until you get an overflow onto the shoulder of Route nine?
Great, great question. I mentioned that towards the end of my presentation. Maybe you missed that part, but I, the answer is a whole lot. And that, it's over 25. And that's very, very unlikely to happen. So the site design is well suited for this use. So we don't, we don't envision any issues with that, with queuing.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's only usually when you have a major issue, you know, they have a lot of salt down on the roads and you have a lot of people coming in on a Saturday morning. I just want to, I was just a little concerned about that. But I mean, if it happens once in the blue moon, you know, we can maybe deal with it, but I just wanted to make sure you felt comfortable with the amount of cars that could be on there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mertens. Any of the board members, any, any questions for any of the professionals? Mr. Gonzalez?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. De Luca? Yes, Mr. Chairman. So I take it this concludes? That concludes our presentation. I don't know if the board would like to open up to the public. We'd like to see if there's anyone here from the public, but that concludes our planned presentation. We would like the right to reserve comment if there is anything from the public that we think should be addressed.
Mr. De Luca, I just have one additional question that was not addressed from my letter. I'm not sure who the right person to ask it is. But we had asked that colored architectural renderings be provided. Could you, could one of your professionals maybe just give some testimony as to the proposed colors of the facade?
Sure. So we actually have an exhibit. I believe it's exhibit A18. Jake, I could be wrong, but can you put that up?
Yep, I'm going to pull it up right now. It is A18. I'm going to share my screen. Everyone see that all right?
Okay, so this is a color architectural rendering of the four elevations of the building, correct?
That is correct. And then I just walk into board through some of the material, really starting from the base. It's going to be CMU block. As you progress up, you'll be EFS in certain areas. We actually have a fiber cement board. That's the multicolored blue board. You see this be facing the parking spaces adjacent to the vacuum. And then in the backside facing Walmart. So we have a breakup of different materials. There'll be a large majority being EFS as you work up the building. And then a metal roofing that'll be arched going through the majority of the actual tunnel itself. So we've accommodated as much as we can with the code. We've actually added a bump out. You can see the, the main component. The front, it's really the actual equipment room, but the, the main components actually protrudes out approximately two feet from the face of the, the main tunnel length. So it gives another depth going across the frontage of the building.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
You. So board members, can we have the screen back, please?
I'm sorry, I'll stop sharing.
So board members, we'd like to open this up to public. Can I have a motion, please?
Some board members, we'd like to open this up to public. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion, can we open the public?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Eileen?
Hey, at this time, the chairman has opened the hearing up for members of the public. Anyone wishing to ask questions or comments on the application, please use the raise your hand feature. I'll bring it into the meeting one at a time. You will need to have audio and video. You will be sworn in and required to give your name and address. If you're calling in, please use star nine to raise or lower your hand and star six to mute or unmute yourself. Thank you.
Okay, Eileen, we'll give them the attendees an opportunity here.
Okay.
You know, Eileen, it doesn't look like there's any appetite from the public.
No, I have no one raising their hand. I know a couple of people on there are with the application, so. But no one has raised their hand.
Okay. Board members?
I make a motion that we close the public session.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes, Chair.
Do we have a second? Mr. Mertens? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eileen, we're closed to public.
All right. Public comments is now closed.
Mr. De Luca, would you like to give us some final comments so that, you know, the board members that would have to review the record will have the opportunity to do some?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll, I'll be very brief. I want to thank you for your consideration. I know it's getting late and I will not repeat what everyone has said. The issue before the board primarily initially is whether the applicant is satisfied its burden of proving whether a D one use variance is appropriate and for the reasons stated by Ms. Caphone, and I don't believe contradicted by your planner, we believe the answer is clearly yes. You know, D, D variances have the same burden of proof. A D one variance, whether or not this is listed as a conditional use or not. However, this really is a unique use variance. Clearly, how township has recognized not only in putting it in as a conditional use, but also contemplating the adoption of a land use element that seeks to rectify the, the glitch in the ordinance where we have a conditional use with no conditions. This section of the township on Route nine is clearly an area that the township has envisioned for car washes. And for the reasons that Ms. Caphone stated, we believe this site promotes the general welfare because it is particularly suitable for this site in this location. And it, we can do that without really changing the nature and character of the neighborhood and can easily reconcile the grant of that use variance against the fact that it's not a permitted use expressly in the HD one zone. The bulk variances are subsumed, in my opinion, but even if they're not, this site is tailor-made for this car wash use, which is unique because it's a long, narrow building. And so this lot has some depth, but it's got a unique shape and a narrow frontage where it meets Route nine. And that just happens to lend itself well for, for our use. We are short in a couple of areas, lot frontage, lot size. And as a result of that, in part, the front yard and side yard setback, together with retaining wall height and the accessory structures in the front yard, we believe the record clearly justifies the grant of those variances. The signs, hey, the signs have been a work in progress and we appreciate your indulgence in hearing why we, these signs are so important to us. We tried to scale it down to what we really require to successfully operate a business here. We believe that there's been evidence submitted that justifies those variances, and I won't repeat that evidence. But we would ask you to grant those variances as well as the various design exceptions or waivers that have been mentioned for the reasons testified. So thank you again for your consideration. And we'd ask that you grant a D one use variance preliminary and final major site plan together with any of the variances and waivers that are required for that plan to be approved. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We've, this is Mr. Del Duca's call, but as we've come across many times, we were right on the limit of how many could vote. I'm just going to be upfront and say I don't have any problems. And should we just get a feel for the, the members? If they have any concerns, they want more time?
Mr. Gonzalez?
Good to go. I have no concerns.
Mr. Moretti?
He's muted. Jim?
Jim, you're muted.
Uh, no concerns.
There you are. Mr. Bear?
Well, it's up again. We, we can't poll the board, but I guess the applicant has a feel for the boards that there's no concerns about the application. We could proceed to vote or you could carry depending on how Mr. Del Duca wants to proceed.
One second, please, if you wouldn't mind. Just one second. Mr. Chairman, would you mind giving me about a minute if I can mute, please, just to make a decision?
Absolutely, sir.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. The applicant is willing to proceed with a vote this evening.
Mr. Bear?
Well, I think you're, I guess it's time if there's a motion one way or another in connection with the Hutton ST seventeen's conditional use variance and preliminary and final major site plan with ancillary bulk variance and waiver relief application. And you would need five votes, five of the board's, you need five votes to pass it. It's a D one variance.
The pleasure of the board.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, based on the testimony that's been put on the record and all the stipulations that have been asked by our engineer, our planner, I'd like to make a motion to approve this application. I think it's an excellent fit here. I know they're kind of in a tight spot with the configuration of the lot, but I think the engineer did an outstanding job. I like the whole application and I'd like to see that property, you know, doing some good on our Route nine corridor. So my motion's to approve.
All right, we got a motion to approve this application. Do we have a second?
I second that motion based upon the information provided by the the conundrum. He had covered many areas, covered all the points of interest. Make sure that the D one was all covered and I definitely second the motion.
Okay, we got a first and we got a second. Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Hughes?
I, yes, I absolutely think it's a great use of the property, so I vote yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Chairman Saya?
I too would like to thank the applicant for all the site improvements that are going to be made on this site and for complying with our professionals, with the planner and the engineers' reports. So I vote yes.
Motion carries. Application's approved.
Thank you all very much. We really appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. De Luca.
All right, good night.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Mr. Bear, you, you've catched everything, I'm sure, including the Title thirty-nine and all that good stuff.
Absolutely. Well, I, the, the board should know also that Kelly Carrie is on your participant list there from my office. And she's a excellent scripner of the incorporating all the board's conditions, so.
Thank you so much, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Gorgiano?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate everything. I'm going to get off now.
Okay. So, Mr. Bear, do we have any other activity?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I did discuss with Eileen, it will be very quick. It is nine thirty-four. To go into executive session to discuss the Stavola Asphalt Company Inc. versus Howell Zoning Board of Adjustment Court opinion, which came out last week, which I believe Eileen circulated to the members.
Yes, and to do that, we need to go out of this meeting and log back into a different meeting. And I sent everyone an email on Friday with that link to the other meeting.
Your emails. And, and before we would do that, if it's the wish of the board, we would need a motion go into executive session in, in this session to-
I have to read the resolution as well.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Oh, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair, to go into executive.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a first and a second.
Want a roll call?
Roll call.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Um, I will say, yes, the only thing is, Eileen, I did not open the link for that. Is that going to, I don't want to hold people up.
You're going to have to open your email and click the link in the email.
Okay.
When we get out of this session, okay?
Okay, if my computer cooperates real quick, if there's any issues, I'll give you, I'll text you.
That's fine, and then I'll text you the info, okay?
Okay, thanks.
It's, I, I mean, it's not the same thing as this thing that we-
No, it has, it has to be separate, so the public's not invited.
Okay, very good.
All right.
Because I don't know, I got to go look for it.
All right, I'll text you all the information, but then you're going to have to put it in. But if you get my email, there's a link. You could just click on the link.
Okay.
It's easier, okay? Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yep, I have that.
And Chairman Saya?
Yes.
Okay. Then I need to-
I'll say, Eileen, for the record, though, action will be taken as a result of executive session. So there's no reason for the public to hang around if-
Okay.
Wait and see, so.
I just have to read this and then executive session resolution. Whereas Title ten, Chapter four, Section thirteen of the New Jersey Revised Statutes requires that the public shall not be excluded from any meetings of a public body unless a resolution authorizing such exclusion is adopted at a public meeting. And whereas the Zoning Board of Adjustment of the Township of Howell has determined that such a closed meeting is required to discuss certain matters which are exempted from consideration with the public in attendance under New Jersey Revised Statutes ten, colon, four, dash, twelve, namely litigation. Now therefore be it resolved by the Zoning Board of Adjustment of the Township of Howell that the public shall be excluded from the next portion of this meeting and that the Zoning Board of Adjustment will not reconvene in public session thereafter. Be it further resolved that minutes will be kept of the meeting in closed session and the time and circumstances under which the discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public cannot be determined at this time. So with that, I guess we need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, Hughes and Moretti?